We will, as usual, start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. And we have our Police Department Chaplain, Gary Marcello Jenkins, to lead us in prayer and pledges.
God bless you.
Good morning.
Will you bow your head as I pray? In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, if I pray for our Mayor Brenda Gunner, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council, I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern among the conflict and interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what will please you and what will benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of San Angelo. And finally, I pray for our community, that there will be peace, unity, and prosperity amongst each and every one of us. In your most blessed name, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We do have one proclamation today, and I'm going to ask Monica Ramos or Del Velazquez or Susana Valenzuela to come up here. Every three hours in the United States, a train hits a person or vehicle. More than 50% of collisions occur at crossings equipped with lights and/or gates. It is in the Railway Museum of San Angelo's interest to raise citizens' awareness of the damages of ignoring safety warning signs at railroad crossings and trespassing on rail property to reduce avoidable deaths, injuries, and damages caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. Operation Lifesaver is a public-private partnership whose aim is to work with the public, rail industry, governments, police services, media, and others to raise rail safety awareness. The City of San Angelo supports the ongoing efforts to raise awareness, save lives, and prevent injuries in communities, including our municipality. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September the 19th through the 25th, 2022, as Rail Safety Week, and encourage all citizens to participate in activities to reduce crossing, crashes, and pedestrian railroad trespass incidents throughout the year. Thank you, Monica. Do you want to come forward?
Thank you, Mayor. Every three hours in the United States, a person or vehicle is hit by a train. According to the Federal Railroad Association statistics, 2,145 highway rail-grade crossing collisions occurred in 2021. There were 235 fatalities and 669 injuries last year across the U.S. Texas ranked number one with 17 deaths and 58 injuries. For trespassing casualties, Texas came in second with 57 deaths and 62 injuries. The Railway Museum of San Angelo understands the importance of Rail Safety Week and would like for the citizens of our community to be rail-smart and help us stop track tragedies. By participating in Rail Safety Week, we can educate people on being safe around highway rail-grade crossings and railroad tracks. So when you're at or near any railroad crossing, here are a few tips to keep in mind. Avoid distracted driving by driving safely and obeying all warning signs. Always expect a train. Walk safely near tracks and look both ways. Walking or playing around railroad tracks is trespassing. Never pass flashing lights or go around lowered gates. Selfies and photo shoots on train tracks can have deadly consequences. Stay safe, stay away, and stay off. Thank you.
We will now move into the public comment section of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. I'm going to start by thanking our Parks Department. They did a tremendous job this past week preparing for the Lily Fest on Saturday. Rain certainly helped, but no one could beautify that Civic League park like they did, even if it was just a little bit of a rain. So it looked beautiful, and I know the challenges you've all lived with this year with the drought. It's been tough to keep the parks looking as fresh and managed as possible, but you guys have done it, and I want to thank you for that. They're a great element of our quality of life here in San Angelo. So all that we can do to continue to make our parks a bonus to this city, we thank you for that. Thank you very much, Roger. Daniel, you want to offer some comments?
Mayor, if yes, if I may. So we've gotten a lot of emails, phone calls, that pertains to the animal shelter this past week, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear. As I mentioned last City Council meeting, our hopes are to meet with the animal rescue groups, which we started doing that this week. And nothing is set in stone at this point. The objective is to get the number down to a manageable number within the animal shelter, and that's our goal at this point, and that's what we're trying to do. Our preference is to adopt out the animals before we even start thinking about euthanization, but we really need the adoption efforts to work out well, but also responsible pet ownership, as Harry mentioned last City Council meeting. That's going to be key for us. The thing that's been problematic is we've had way too many animals at the shelter, to the detriment of those animals and to the detriment especially of the staff that's out there. They work very hard, they work very diligently at the job that they do, they're constantly cleaning, and they, I've seen them, they go around, they clean one area, go to the next area, go to the next area. By the time they come back around, there's defecation, there's issues there. But we understand that, but we do want to make sure that we do have a manageable number at the animal shelter. The perception right now is, and what's been put out there is that we're looking at euthanizing all these animals to get it to a number where it's manageable. That is not the case. As I mentioned last time, we want to work with the animal rescue groups, we want to develop a plan that will work for us. But again, primary goal for us is the community health and safety. We want to make sure that there's not any animals running around, any dogs running around that may bite, that may have rabies, that may attack someone, that may spread some other diseases. So we're concerned about that, so that's the primary goal for that animal shelter. And also to, I want to make sure that we're keeping our staff working in a safe environment as well. So that is our strongest effort. Yes, absolutely, we would love to save the animals out there, but again, it's going to be a concerted effort. It's going to require this community to work together to make that happen. However, I do want to point out, though, that euthanization is something that we have to consider if those numbers get way too high and the animals are not being adopted out. I can tell you that no-kill is an effort that Borgon took on. She did as good-hearted effort on her part. There's articles that come out from PETA that says that no-kill is not feasible. It's not even humane. There are certain animals that come into the shelter that, quite frankly, cannot be adopted out for either they're a little bit too violent, they're older, diseased, and we don't want to hold those animals there because we're a no-kill shelter. We don't want to keep them there alive until they die of natural causes. We want to make sure, if anything, that we are humane, and in those instances, we may have to euthanize. So again, on our end, I just want to emphasize that the efforts for the animal shelter, as far as what we want to do, it's not about euthanization, it's about all of us working together to make sure that we can reduce the number of animals out there.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If so, please come forward. And as we said earlier, please state your name and your area of residence, and limit your remarks to three minutes, please.
Hi. I'm Ryan Hernandez, live on 810 North Jackson Street, so Councilwoman Gonzalez is my representative. I also, I interned for City Manager Valenzuela back in the old days, 2014, what I like to call the trash summer. But really, what I wanted to do is thank the staff for the great job they've done. From my experience, I have a Master of Public Administration from UNT. I have worked in New York and kind of had a coming back home and give back to the community. And I've been to conferences like ICMA and different conferences for different staff members, and I can tell you, I'm passionate about, you know, city development, planning, inspection, public information, communications. I've lived in Capel, I've lived in Denton. We are very lucky to have the staff that we have. I'm biased, but I think the city manager has been doing a great job. And I just want to say thank you to the staff, because you guys have done an amazing job. Last time I was here full-time, I was, went to corners on Christian School off of Jefferson, it was 2013. And I come back, it's 2022, and it is so much better as far as new businesses, downtown's doing great. So I just want to thank the staff for that, and trust me, I have seen dysfunctional staffs.
Are you applying for a job as you speak? We have a lot of job openings, so I mean, just, you know...
No, 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 no.
I'm Brian Kendrickson, but I'm sure he has an application in the back of the room that he'd be glad to hand to you.
I'm not asking for anything other than saying thank you for the work you guys do. I know it's tireless. I also have two dogs that I adopted from Contra Valley Paws. This is my contribution. I care about them, but yet at the same time, I understand what you guys have to do. My eventual goal is to get a dog park over, you know, talking to plan, to get a dog park over by Kirby Park or Brentwood or put a...
It takes money, and are you going to raise money?
It takes money, right? And so how do we do that? And we can partner with, my partner with Contra Valley Paws and do that. The only other concern I have is that I live close to Brentwood Park, and there is no water fountain there at Brentwood Park. And, you know, I go to UNAD as well, I go to, you know, all the parks, I have a niece, and I would love to take her there to Brentwood Park, but there is no water fountain there as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ren.
Further public comment? Please come forward.
Hi. My name's Tatang Giese, and I am in...
Which district?
Tewig and Johnson. I volunteer with animal rescue, and I just wanted to do a couple, say a couple of things. I'd like to encourage y'all to seek out competent shelter management, day-to-day physical operations. I don't think we have that. I would also like to encourage spay-neuter, the education of it, maybe through the school systems, and the enforcement of our codes for spay-neuter. That, there's going to be people that don't like that, but that needs to be done. That's where we need to start, is to encourage that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
Good morning. My name is Sharon Hoffman. I live at Wall, so I don't have a district here in town. I work with Critter Shack and Animal Rescue Group and met with some city officials yesterday. I would just like to follow up by saying, number one, it certainly is the fault of the people in San Angelo who overbreed, abandon, and don't take proper care of their animals. That is where these animals at the shelter come from. But once they enter the shelter itself, they become the problem of the city. And the treatment of the animals while in the city shelter is the city's responsibility. There's no doubt. What we saw, and we went there on August the 30th, was inhumane, hoarding, overcrowding, horrific treatment. So that's something that we don't think should be allowed to happen. We think it should not have been allowed to happen. When it got to that point, I have no idea, I haven't been in that shelter in six years. But we would like to see steps made to, and I believe you have, to rectify that situation, to work with, we're happy to meet with, with council members. We would encourage a massive spay-neuter effort in order to prevent these unwanted litters of puppies and kittens and dogs and cats. You have to start at the root of the problem, and that is sterilization. The adopting out and the other part is just the end result. So please, put some money, think about a massive spay-neuter program, education, not just in the elementary school, but education of pet owners here in San Angelo. Enforcement of the code, enforcement of the spay-neuter ordinance would be mandatory. Those things seem to be obvious, but we're not sure it's going to happen, and we'd like to see it happen. We're certainly willing to do our part. One of the things that the next person who speaks is going to show you are some pictures that we saw that day, because I don't know if you've seen them, I don't know if you know how bad it was, but it was as bad as any hoarding situation I have seen here in San Angelo or anywhere else, and that was in the city-owned shelter. It was unbelievable. So I want you to see what it looked like. And it was bad that day, and it was bad the day before, and I suspect it was bad the week before that and the week before that. It was not a one-day occurrence. These animals were housed in crates that had not been cleaned, and it's not the people who were cleaning's fault, they were trying their best. You had two people cleaning where you needed 20. So please, do something to rectify the situation. Please do something to ensure that whoever's in charge out there is properly trained, that has experience in training in proper shelter management, and work with all rescues in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Daniel.
I do want to point out that no-kill, again, in this instance, as you're talking about, we had overpopulation of animals at the shelter. No-kill can be a detriment, and you end up with an overpopulation. This past year was an especially trying year because of our economy. You know, we had inflation go through the roof where people couldn't afford pet food. They were turning their animals into the shelter, there's animals that are running loose. You're absolutely right, as far as the spay-neuter, it needs to be something that's enforced, it's something that's really important in this community to get the management of those animals as well. But again, I do want to point out, yes, pictures were taken at the animal shelter, but again, I saw my staff out there just cleaning and cleaning and working really hard. They just could not maintain because there's too many animals out there. So that's why I'm saying we need to reduce that population, and we need to all work together to make that happen. So yes, we're aware of the pictures, and we'd never want the shelter to look like that again, but in order for that to happen, the number of animals need to be reduced.
Thank you. Who else would like to offer public comment today?
I'm with Critter Shack, Bailey Polnick. I've been pulling and networking...
Please talk into the microphone.
Okay, sorry.
Just move it so it's easier for you to talk, okay?
I've been pulling and networking dogs since 2011 out of this shelter.
Your name and your address.
I said Bailey Polnick, and I'm 9237 Bermuda Lane, and I work with Critter Shack or volunteer with Critter Shack. I've been pulling animals since 2011 and networking them from the shelter. That is the worst I have ever seen it. It is inhumane and cruel. I mean, it is the worst, probably almost hoarding situation I have ever seen, and I've worked a lot of hoarding situations in surrounding counties, but that is by far the worst I've ever seen it. Dogs were being housed in wire kennels with no plastic bottoms, none whatsoever. The pictures that she's going to pass around don't even do justice as to what we saw. No food, no water. I mean, it is wrong. It is animal cruelty. And I mean, yes, the no-kill, it's not feasible here. I mean, you can look back at what Waco's doing and maybe plan that five, 10 years down the road, but here, it is not feasible. To get to that point someday down the road, yes, maybe, but to do that, we need to step back, and the most important thing is to get to the root of the problem, which is for the city to fund some sort of spay and neuter ordinance, which we have, and put all of our efforts into spay and neuter. What is the city going to do on that, is my question? Is the city willing to put money into a spay-neuter program?
We do have a spay-neuter program, ma'am. And you talked about it a while ago, and it's the enforceability of that. There's things that the city needs to be doing, and we do agree with that. So again, your concern as far as the spay-neuter goes to the spay-neuter program, as far as the responsibility of the pet owners, but also the adoptability and the assistance we can get from you guys, from all the other animal rescue groups. We would love to see your participation...
Right, and we run a low-cost spay-neuter clinic that we opened in 2015. We fix about 30-plus animals a week given, and we sell about 100 vouchers a month, give or take, probably 133. So my question is, is the city going to ever implement something like that for the City of San Angelo?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's what we need.
The answer is yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they are going to try to do that.
No, it's not try, we are going to do that, so it'll be taken care of.
Okay.
So we do have the ordinance in place, and on our end, I know as far as enforceability, we have the authority to do that, and we definitely, and the meetings that we're having with you and the other animal rescue groups, that's one of the areas we're talking about. And we've heard you, and we know that on our end, we need to do everything we can to make sure that we can reduce those numbers, and that's going to be one of the ways that we do it.
Right, because if not, you're just mopping up a puddle of water, and it's just constantly leaking down.
That is correct. I agree with you.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment?
Good morning. My name is Kim Henry, and I'm with SMD3, and I'm here to talk something actually that has to do with dogs and accessibility. But I'm not here just as a business owner, which I own the Gold Beacon, a business downtown. I'm here as a person living with disabilities. I'm here as a mother of a child that's living with disabilities and special needs. I'm a survivor, a veteran, and an advocate, but more so, I'm a member of this community. This is a community where over 16,000 people are living with disabilities. However, that's just an estimate, because 30% of the professional workforce, which are people who can contribute to our economy, even, they recognize or they fit the definition of a disability, however, only 39% of them, which is 39% of the 30%, actually disclose that, meaning that they're working in places that are not comfortable, they're not accessible to services or programs. In reality, everyone here is at some point in time going to need help in their life with accessibility. You're not going to be able to drive to Walmart and get something on your own, or get your favorite soap, or go to a movies. So everyone, this impacts everybody. One of the biggest factors of accessibility is the fact that people are uncomfortable. Daisy has a patch that says not all disabilities are visible, because really, disability comes in different forms and at different times. Disability, I say, does not discriminate. And I want to share a story with you that happened recently to me. I was with my family, my children, and a man came up really quickly and very closely and asked me, what does she do? Did he introduce himself, say his name, anything? And I don't mind explaining to people what Daisy does for me, I love to use it as an educational opportunity. However, he interrupted me as I'm trying to explain this to him, waved his hand in my face and said, oh, I thought you were blind. So, not surprised, but it sucked. I don't know what else word to use. It was, I mean, I couldn't move. Luckily, my children didn't have to see that, because I'm always terrified of embarrassing them. But it's not always individuals, and the reason I'm here in front of City Council today is because it's programs, services, and policies that are limiting accessibility in the city. That's why the ADA, the American Disabilities Act, is one of the most comprehensive civil rights laws. Title II covers government services and programs. We're supposed to have an ADA coordinator. We do have a human resource director, but I've spoke with them, and they said, no, we need an ADA coordinator. Let me give you an example of why. Compare us to Wichita Falls, they have four ADA coordinators. Our transition plan, which is the city's self-evaluation of how we're handling disabilities, is supposed to be updated every three to five years. Do you know the last time our transition plan was updated? Does anybody know? 1993. I was two years old. So what I'm asking for the city to do is, please give us time on the agenda, on a future agenda, to be able to discuss the proposal that I've created to help address this issue of accessibility of ADA, and I know that's going to cost money to hire somebody, but it's going to save you more than tens of millions you could be sued. So please consider putting us on the agenda. I have the super.
Thank you very much.
My name's Andrea Soufley, and I live off of Westway Drive by the Country Club. And I work with Kimberly on this proposal that we would like to get time for in a future agenda. I believe it affects a large population in our town. We have a lot of retired vets that live here that are disabled. We have a lot of young people that I think would like to live here if it was just a little bit more accessible. We want to talk to you about downtown accessibility in parking, because it's non-existent, pretty much. It just makes things difficult. Last year, I had Achilles surgery, and I had to be in a wheelchair for three months, and it was a whole new world. And so I thank God, I mean, the one positive thing out of COVID was curbside delivery. I mean, that saved me. But I want to go to the mom and pop stores. I mean, it's amazing how much mobility, mobile accessibility can detriment a person's access to a fun, full life. And so we just want to, we have a plan, Kimberly's done amazing work, and we want to just have the time to be able to discuss this with all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
I'm Vera Kirkpatrick, and I live off of Southland on Coral Way. And all of these comments are very good about the animals and saving them. But I want us to remember on November the 8th to vote for the ordinance to save the babies. The babies are important, too. More important to me, of course, than animals. So also, I wonder if the Center for the Animals has ever thought about abortion for the animals, if they are pregnant with puppies or kittens, there's ways to abort those babies. So that's something maybe that you could look into. But anyway, let's be sure and vote November the 8th for the ordinance to save our babies.
Further public comment? Seeing none, we will now move into our consent agenda. I will start with Larry and ask, is there anything from the consent agenda you would like to pull?
No, ma'am.
Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
William.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
With nothing being pulled from the consent agenda, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved by four people. And if we could convert two of those into seconds, that would be terrific.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Public comment concerning the consent agenda. Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seeing no, no's, we have approved the consent agenda seven to zero. We will now move into our regular agenda items. We will start with comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead... proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above, and then instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item 6A on the regular agenda is, consider updating the amount of the award of CE-01-22 to $253,404 for the purchase of two shared boiler replacements using $126,702 from the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund balance, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Tina, you're on.
Thank you, Mary Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. You've already seen this project before, and you've already approved this project. Typically Sid would have brought this item back, but he, Rick, and Carl are out today, I think at a conference or something. But the reason that we're bringing it back is to create the budget for the project, as well as when Sid previously brought it, he had put a rounded number in the dollar amount, and so we wanted to make that an exact number that matches the contract, as well as word the caption in a way that we can budget for the project. So it's really just housekeeping. None of the amounts have changed, like I said, other than slightly that dollar amount that he had rounded up, so.
Are there questions for Tina on this item? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of item 6A? So moved by Tom, and seconded by Harry. Public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Item 6B, consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a non-exclusive aerial right-of-way license use agreement with Shannon Medical to allow for an aerial encroachment of 1,168 square feet for the construction of a utility bridge and associated signage within the East College Avenue public right-of-way between North Oak Street and North Magdalen Street. John, you're on.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is part of Shannon's expansion that they are looking at. They will be doing some building on this side of the campus, and so what they're proposing as part of that is to move some of their utility equipment across college street there. And then they will be constructing basically a bridge over the street for utility piping and that sort of thing. And so this is a request for basically an encroachment, to allow that encroachment into the right-of-way. Again, normally you see these, and it's for things like awnings downtown or things like that. But this would be for that bridge, similar to the bridge that they have across, I think it's Harris. But that's a pedestrian, large pedestrian bridge. This is a much smaller, because it's not, it won't be for people, it's just for that kind of equipment connections.
What does it look like?
I think we've got some graphic images of it in just a second. I will point out that you can see this smaller little box in here. That's the actual bridge structure. This request is for slightly larger than that. You can see it goes like 10 feet on either side, and that's really just a buffer area in case they get out there and they decide they need to move it over two or three feet. We don't want to put it exactly where they think they're going to put it, and then have to come back to you, you know, if they move it five feet over based on site conditions. So again, this is a slightly different view of it. This is the hospital building over here. This will be the utility bridge, and then that central utility plant features will be across the street in what is now that sort of grassy area with trees. So here is sort of a conceptual drawing of it. Again, so you can see here sort of what it looks like. There's a better graphical image, I think, on the next slide, but this kind of gives you the sense. They have worked with Public Works, and I believe the Fire Department, on ensuring that vehicles, fire trucks, everything, that the height is at a proper height for vehicles to pass under, just like you would see on any other bridge, if it were a road bridge.
Including the Main Street Bridge? The height?
Make sure it's higher than Main Street. We hit it all the time.
Yes, and again, they've worked with Shane and his folks on ensuring. In fact, I think the minimum height we've set in the resolution is lower than what they propose. In other words, we've said you can't go below this, and I can't remember the number, I think it may be 18 feet. Theirs is actually 20 feet or 22 feet. So it exceeds what our minimum requirement was.
Do we continue to post on those bridges, if you will, the height restrictions and issues? Because we keep having, certainly, this is a different subject, but between the two recent events on Houston Heart with damages to the bridges, the question mark is, do we post signs that say, this is the minimum or maximum, whatever the verbiage is?
Clearance, yeah.
Because these are expensive problems.
I would defer to Shane or Patrick on that. I don't know. Like you see on the interstate bridges, you know, minimum clearance or whatever. I just don't know if we do that.
Patrick's coming up, because we need that conversation to happen. It's way too expensive to just have people experiment with whether their equipments.
The answer is yes, ma'am. There is preemptive signs that go in place, as well as signage on overhead structures that do go over the top of the right-of-way to warn any passenger or any drivers with overheight loads of what that height is, and give them enough time to stop and reroute before they come in contact with those structures.
And are there tickets that are written when they do do damage, and obviously ignore the height restrictions?
I would have to defer to PD on that one, as far as what they can and can't do as far as ticketing.
Thank you, Patrick.
I believe it's in your packet. I thought we had the graphic in here of the drawing, but basically...
I didn't think I missed it.
Basically, it will be a metal lattice structure, but then they'll put...
Did it go before the Design and Historic Review Committee?
It did. This has, I'm glad you asked that. This has been to the Design and Historic Review Commission. It will be sort of an off-white color, similar to the facing of the hospital itself, so it'll look very similar. One of the things that was discussed at the DHRC is that, you know, a big white bridge is the monotone color, you know, it needs some visual interest. And so what they proposed was a little, the Shannon shamrock, the green shamrock, kind of in the middle, just to give it some visual interest and break up. I know someone from Shannon's here, so if you have specific questions about materials and that sort of thing, I think they could probably answer that.
I think the big thing is just making it attractive, and not just an ugly thing. Yes, Tom.
John, was just the first thought when I saw this, was not able to go underground with it.
That's a question for them, why they chose to...
Well, once we see the diagram, it goes all the way across, so you can't go underground what's already covered, so.
Can you go underground and then come up? I don't know. Someone is, Shannon, I think, is here, perhaps. I think I see him.
Dale, come on up.
Dale, okay.
Yep, just had to show up today.
Dale Droll with Shannon Medical Center. We preferred to go underneath to begin with, but the water table and the concho conglomerate trapped so much water above it, we couldn't find a way to build a tunnel and keep it dry. So our second choice was to go overhead. So yes, we prefer to work on going underneath, but we could not solve the water issues there. And if y'all have any other questions on it, I'll be glad to answer.
I think the big issue is the aesthetics of it, and making sure it...
Yes, we do have, unfortunately, it's not in here, we do have a rendering that shows the colors. It does blend well with the hospital and our central plant that we're going to build. It does have a green shamrock on it, you know, just to give it a little, like John was saying, a little color. But it will blend and complement everything else we're doing in the area.
Yes, who has it? Yes, Karen?
The computer-generated graphic makes everything look visually seamless, but I'm curious whether or not any mechanical equipment will pop up above that profile that we can see here.
It will not. The mechanic, what the bridge is for, some conduits for power, and also chill water piping, but all of that will be inside of the bridge, inside of the cap. You won't see it from underneath, so it'll be encapsulated in our structure.
So not visible above and not visible below?
No, ma'am. It is not.
Thank you.
If there's work, repair that needs to be done, how do you get to it?
We should have removable panels, hopefully, because it is welded pipe and things of that nature. That section there should never need work, but we do have some removable panels, but it will still be the same product on there.
Are there further questions or comments? Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Are there questions for John James on this item? Further questions? All right, then, I need a motion for approval. Tom, did you just make it?
Harry did.
Harry just made a motion. May I have a second? Seconded by Tommy. Any public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven to zero. We will move into item C, consider a resolution allowing the adjacent property owner to remove trees in the public. Now, this becomes an issue, to remove trees in the public right-of-way on the east side of North Oak Street, adjacent to 120 East Terrace Avenue, per Section 7.02.034 of the City Code of Ordinances. John?
Thank you. This is the same project, and part of the expansion of Shannon will be building a building up to this property line, something like that. And so those three trees that you see there are big. I think they're pecans that really branch out. And so building a building like typical downtown buildings that are right up on the sidewalk on the property line will sort of encroach into those trees. So one option would be to basically cut half the tree off and leave the tree there. But, so, they really don't want to do that because of the way that will look. And so the proposal is to remove those three large trees and replace them. And you can see the three trees here. And then replace them. And it's a little hard to see on this graphic, but there's multiple small trees that they will be replacing in all of those locations. So taking out three big trees and planting, I believe, some crepe myrtles, and I forget the other type of tree.
Mountain laurel.
Mountain laurel, that's right. And so again, those are smaller trees that won't grow as big, but in some ways that's helpful in terms of having the building right up there. And it is a fairly narrow planting strip. And so, you know, when they first came to us with this, we told them that in the past, this does require City Council approval, and in the past, the council has asked for replacement trees. So if you're taking out trees downtown, you need to replace them. And so this is the landscaping plan that they presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have questions or comments from City Council? Harry?
So as an accountant, and I'm looking at this, you're removing three, and it says adding eight, but your total of 12. Three and eight make 11.
Well, so they are replacing trees in the right-of-way, but like this tree, for example, is on their property. And so they've, they're also proposing that one additional tree on their property.
Just for, so everybody that's watching this understands that I still add.
I've heard many people's comments that they, that we need to make sure in this large development of Shannon Hospital that we have a lot of green space. There's concern that it's intense with buildings and lack of green space. And so I think it's important we continue to look at and make sure that where we have the possibility of having a conversation about green space and lots of trees, we need to be having those conversations. Green space is pretty important. It's very building intense, particularly in the downtown area.
And I will point out that there are two existing trees down on this end, and then one down here that's on, these are in the right-of-way. This one up here is on private property, but that will remain as well. So the, you know, there will be some of those big trees that are out there you see today that will remain. But those three there in the middle, adjacent to the new building, are the ones that will be removed.
Larry?
Yes, ma'am. I've spoken to Mr. James about this and several other people, that the idea of mountain laurel or crepe myrtle are not a tree, they're a shrub. And I think it would be more preferable to get something that provides some shade through that area, and also wouldn't be an obstruction to the walkway there, because crepe myrtle and mountain laurel grow horizontally and could impede traffic through there. I think that would be a far better selection, if the space allows it.
That's a good point. And the area there, it's, I believe it is a fairly narrow strip, maybe four to five feet wide that they would plant in. I guess, I mean, obviously, this is your approval, you can require whatever you want. I would defer to the applicant on why they chose those particular trees, and if...
Are they trees?
They're kind of in a class of things that can be considered small trees or large bushes, depending on classification. But yes, we would consider those trees in terms of landscaping requirements.
Because what we don't want to do is make an exception on this. And then when other people come and ask to remove a tree, and we say, "No, you've got to have a tree," then we've set a situation up that we're allowing bushes, not trees, to replace trees. So I think we need to be very cautious about what we do here in setting precedent on this issue.
The other thing I would say is, we've done this in similar circumstances in the past, where oftentimes, if they're taking out big trees like this, and they're planting smaller things, we ask them to do more, you know, if they were to put three crepe myrtles to replace these three big pecans, that really doesn't seem to be a fair trade-off. But because they're putting in 12, that made it seem more reasonable.
They're sitting in six mountain laurel.
Well, six mountain laurel and six crepe myrtles. Again, those are smaller. I've seen in other cities where I've worked, oftentimes, they have similar trade-offs, that if you take out a tree, you can replace it with one tree or three shrubs, or, you know, you can have trade-offs like that. But again, if part of the concern is the urban streetscape and having shade trees for people walking down the sidewalk, you know, mountain laurel and crepe myrtle aren't going to provide that. So that's, that obviously could be part of your consideration.
Yes, Lucy?
I just have a quick question. How old are those trees that they're going to separate?
That's a good question. I would, if Rick was here, he might be able to look at them and tell you, but I couldn't answer that.
Yes, Tommy?
Is the sidewalk going to remain? Is that what the implication is?
Yes, yeah, we...
There will be a pedestrian pathway via a sidewalk, so.
Yes, I would defer to them. I believe they're keeping the same sidewalk, but if for some reason they're moving it, there will be, there will be a sidewalk there, definitely.
Yes, the existing sidewalk does remain, and the building, I believe, is like five or eight feet outside of that. The other thing, one of the reasons we tried to choose these plants is because they're hardy. They don't need as much water as an oak or a pecan or something else. So that's another reason we chose these. Now, if we need to look at some options, we can still do that.
Please do.
Yeah.
Because we, you know, other people have come forward and asked for removal of trees, and we said they have to be trees that emulate the same kinds of trees, for example, that are being done on our streetscape. So we cannot approve something that doesn't stay in sync with what we're asking other people to do. And we would not approve anybody, and we haven't approved anybody on Boa Guard, for example, to remove a tree and plant a mountain laurel or a crepe myrtle. So we need reconsideration for what these green shrubs, trees are. And I don't think we support this plan.
And I believe we could work with staff between now and the next City Council meeting to come up with an alternate plan, if that would, if that would work for y'all.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Tommy? Larry, go ahead.
If you would look for a native tree that can withstand the drought conditions we've had, I've heard folks say the pistachio seems to fit that bill.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Tommy?
I haven't heard my fellow council member, it's the suggestion he's making, but I will not repeat it. Mr. Droll, what is the plan to cut down the three pecan trees, or were you going, would you be willing, if somebody wanted to help you remove them and transport them someplace else?
else?
I would say if somebody would be willing to move them, that would be great for us, but with that, that area, like using a tree spade, you're going to tear up the street, the sidewalk.
Yeah. That's going to be my next question, would a tree spade work?
No sir, I don't believe there's enough room for it to get around it.
That was what I was thinking too.
Yes sir, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Since it is a hospital area, based off of the previous public comment we had, is it handicap accessible, that whole area?
The, well, the, the, lower on the screen is where the handicap is located, and all of it will remain, even during the project will remain in effect. And we are even in the parking garage area adding handicaps. So yes, we are trying to, you know, take care of that as best we can.
Okay, thank you. All right, so what we are asking is that there be reconsideration for what replaces what here, so do we just table this, or what do we do?
It depends on what the council would like to do. If you want to direct him to use a specific tree such as the Chinese pistache, you could do that, otherwise we could table this to the next meeting of the city council, which would be October 4th.
What we want to do is, as we have indicated to other people, is use the same kind of trees that we're using on the Chadburn Street project. It needs to all tie in together, and so it needs to be consistent. So if staff and/or our parks department will work with Shannon to ensure that what they do ties in with the other things that we are doing.
My question would be.
Based on that, and so that they didn't have to come back, could we approve it based on that?
Does that work?
It works. I think that works. I guess the direction I'd like to see is, I think what we would probably look at is having them do three or four trees like that, but still have some of the mountain laurels and crepe myrtles for some variety. I guess I just want to make sure that sounds reasonable and feasible to you all.
What we wanted to do is match with the Chadburn Street project.
Okay.
Okay, it needs to tie in with the rest of what we're doing downtown, and so I think working with our parks, people who are fabulous at figuring out a lot of this stuff, we need to make, but we've got to tie in to what we're already investing in.
I'll make a motion to approve this with Shannon working with John, Carl, whomever needs to be involved to get the appropriate foliage planted there.
Does that work Dale? Yeah, okay. Second by Harry. Any further public comment? Seeing none, then we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
With that, it is approved seven zero. Thank you. We will go to item D, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z22-17 to rezone properties from the manufactured housing subdivision to the single-family residential zoning district being .149 acres located at 1826 Magnolia Street.
Thank you, this is a rezoning, as you mentioned. It's from the mobile home or manufactured housing zoning district currently to a single-family residential. It's all in our long-range plan for neighborhood, so either way fits with that. You can see there's an area here that at some point in the past was zoned for manufactured housing, and there are quite a few mobile homes, manufactured homes out there today. There's another area here, is kind of a mixed area, but the rest of that area is RS1, so there's these two lots here at the edge of that manufactured housing that someone has purchased and wants to build a single-family home instead of a manufactured home, and so is just wanting to rezone those two lots to single-family.
Well aesthetically, I think that makes sense, but.
We did send out our notifications, received one in support and none in opposition. As I mentioned, it is within the neighborhood future land use. This was changed in 2009 for a mobile home subdivision, but some of those were installed, some not, and so rezoning would be appropriate in staff's opinion. So staff does recommend approval, as did the planning commission unanimously. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Are there questions for John on this item? A motion is moved to approve by Lucy Gonzalez. May I have a second?
Second.
A second by Karen Hesse. Public comment, please. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven zero. Item E, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance annexing into the city of San Angelo by petition of the property owner and unaddressed 6.9 acre tract out of the A, B, and M survey number three, abstract number 24, Tom Green County, Texas, located northwest of Arden Road and FM 2288. John, you're on.
Thank you. You may remember, I think it was at your last meeting or maybe two meetings ago, you finally approved the rezoning of this area, was already in the city limits. The front part was commercial and the back part was for single-family development. The developer owns a much larger area, but they want to annex and zone this back piece, and you'll, you'll see in a second, I think, if we have the, or you may recall from last time, the map of that area, they have a development plan for all of this area, including this piece, so they need that to be annexed as well in order to develop that whole piece. You can see here, it's about 6.9 acres, just pulling that into the city limits, and so here you can see the proposed development. They've got the layout, they can develop this already, it's already within the city limits, but again, they need this red piece to be added in for their, basically their first phase of their development. This is just a little bit larger, the larger land that they own, that at some point in the future they'll be coming back to you for annexation and zoning for that larger area as well.
Why are we not doing it all at the same time?
It's just the typical way developers do this, they'll do it in phases, and so they'll bring in for annexation and zoning just the phase they're working on, then they'll come back later with the next phase. This is in the city's annexation service plan, or annexation plan, and the annexation does include a service plan that's been reviewed by all city staff, as well as some of the utility providers in the area, and so is deemed satisfactory by all departments and those others as well. The city can serve this area with its existing resources, et cetera. You can't, you do see that there is a future collector road that is shown on this map. If I go back here, they, it's a little hard to see, but they've accommodated this on their plans. They do own this area here as well, but the future collector will come up and it curves around, so it won't actually be within this phase of the development, but will be on a future phase. So they will be accommodating that future thoroughfare as shown on our plans.
Speaking of that, and so whenever this original future plan was put in place based off of the development that has happened in San Angelo, are we in need of re-reviewing that plan and making sure that what was put together prior still makes sense for today's development and what's happening in the city? I know this is a separate conversation, and you've addressed it on this particular project, which is great, but the challenge is, is the existing thoroughfare plan still the correct one, or does it need to be re-reviewed?
I think any plan like that, it's obviously helpful to re-review it every so many years. I would say how we've typically done situations like this is when a developer comes in, we will review it for that area that they're in and sometimes make changes, minor changes like this where they're rerouting a little bit, those don't require a change to the plan because the plan is conceptual, and so if you're close, we would require a change if, if for example, this was owned by someone else and these developers said, hey, we want to move it over onto their property, that's something we would have to bring to you all for a plan change. But if it's moving it slightly on their property, that doesn't require a change. But in terms of looking at the thoroughfare plan in a global sense, I think that would be beneficial. I'm not sure it would be at the top of my list on if we were going to look at plans or ordinances that need updated, that's probably not at the top of the list.
Okay.
Staff does recommend approval, as did, well, I'm sorry, this is the annexation. It doesn't require planning commission action. We did take it to them for just their informational purposes, but no vote was taken, but staff does recommend approval of the annexation.
Do I have questions for John on this item? Larry?
Could you back that up to the plotting of that area?
Nope, I think I'm going the wrong way. You want the larger one or the close end?
Mine right there. I guess what I see here is a bunch of houses stacked together. I don't see a neighborhood. What I'm looking at right now is this area won't have any green areas, playgrounds, whatever. Highlands Range doesn't have it, Bluff doesn't have it, Down by Lamar doesn't have it. We're shorting people by not considering those green areas. I don't know what we can do about this as city council, but we seriously need to take some action so that we allow for those opportunities within a neighborhood.
Other questions for John? Okay, with no further questions, then may I have a motion for approval? So moved by Harry.
I'll second.
Second by Tom. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes seven zero. Item F, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z22-18 to zone property as part of an annexation to the single-family residential zoning district being the 6.9 acres located northwest of Arden Road FM 2288. Again, you're on, John.
Thank you. This is just the companion zoning case, so you just talked about the annexation. This is actually the recommendation to rezone that property when it comes into the city. In the past, a zoning would be applied to the property with the annexation, as we've reviewed that with our legal staff and some changes to state law. We don't necessarily think that's the proper way to do it, to comply with state law, and so now we're taking a zoning case with the annexation at the same time, and so that's why you're seeing this here. Again, this area is in a neighborhood, it's planned for future neighborhood development, so the RS1 zoning makes sense. We did send out our notifications to the one property owner within 200 feet, which is this, this actual property owner, but we could, we could have gone out 500 feet and still only had the one property owner.
So there was no opposition?
There was no opposition.
Just asking.
It is consistent, it complies, the proposed development will comply with the RS1 zoning standards. You just immediately to the east, rezone the property to RS1, so we believe it makes sense. Staff does recommend approval, as did the planning commission unanimously.
Questions for John James? Seeing none, so may I have a motion for approval? Tommy said yes to the motion. May I have a second? Second by Tom Thompson. Public comment on this item? Come forward. Is it on this item?
Yes, it is.
Okay. You must restate your name and where you live.
Andrea Soufley, Westway Drive, Cameron Place Apartments. What is the, the whole zoning thing for this neighborhood? What's the median price?
You know, actually at this point, we couldn't, we couldn't tell. I mean, it's, it could be very expensive homes, it could be very cheap homes. All we're doing at this point is deciding what, that it's going to be single-family residential, nothing beyond that.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven zero. We'll move into item G, second public hearing of an ordinance approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budgeted of $7,307, $295, or a 17.42 percent, and of that amount, $534,154 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll. Tina, you're on. I think the most shocking thing about it is that we see development all over the city happening, and to only see $534,000 in new property is pretty, doesn't seem to make sense when you see all that's opened up and done, et cetera. So that is my comment.
As you're aware, we've gone through all those ones, but we will go through the same presentation that we went through at the last meeting. Again, this is the second reading of the budget ordinance. This chart is depicting all funds, revenue sources, general fund making up almost 42 percent of total revenues, and enterprise funds coming in behind them at 34 percent.
How does that compare to last year's budget?
Kimberly, do you have that information? It's probably pretty similar, but Kimberly can pull that up for us as we go through. All funds, expense by type, personnel makes up just under 44 percent, O and M at 42 percent, capital at almost 14 percent.
And again, we'll need those comparisons to last year.
Okay. So this is what's included in the budget that we're presenting to you today. Health insurance for employees raises, including personnel salaries at a 7 percent increase as well as the market rate adjustment. CDL, additional pay, which is commercial driver license, equipment replacement, there's an additional $200,000 included in the budget, as well as an additional $258,000 that we'll talk about a little later in the presentation. Also, property casualty insurance adjustments to help that fund recover from the losses that they've seen due to claims. We've included new positions for animal services, office assistant, IT cybersecurity analyst, public works grant administrator, and the HR benefits administrator. Additional funding that we're recommending includes using sales tax surplus and the intergovernmental fund balance to fund the remaining $258,000 for equipment replacement, as well as bunker gear replacement for the fire department in the amount of $366,000, and then recommending that we use the remaining CRF funds to aid in fire truck replacement. Charity care, we received that amount this morning actually, and it's going to be just over $332,000. We're recommending that we use that first for ambulance replacement and any remaining dollars be allowed to use toward peak hours ambulance if needed. And then of course, council's aware that we've recommended ARPA funding be used for the stipend to employees, $2,500 per. Hotel occupancy.
Go back, again, we need to look at what percent personnel is relative to this year versus that past year's, as well as the same thing on fire and police, so that we understand the movement in percentages.
Okay. I'll see if Kimberly can pull that up this morning. If not, we may have to bring that back to you, but we can definitely look at that. Hotel occupancy tax, this includes $950,000. Actually, included in the budget is the full million, $12,000, but with 950 being in the contract with the potential for additional $62,000 that can be earned by the DMO based on performance. And then of course, art in uncommon places, we're including $25,000 of hotel tax, the water lily guarding, $25,000 for wayfinding, and then downtown San Angelo, an additional $25,000. And this language just goes through what the budget ordinance allows and how the, how it allows for the city manager to approve some parts of budget amendments and then others that are required to come back to city council. It's a lot of information. I can let you all look at those, but they were included in your background, so you may have already kind of looked through all of that. So other than that, this is a record vote that we will need on the budget ordinance, and I'll let Julia handle that part of it, but do you have any other questions or concerns?
All right, Julia, will you give, oh Karen?
I have a quick question. Given, given the ongoing conversation about the animal shelter, can you pull that line item out for us and the public so that we know what's dedicated to that particular facility and their programs, please?
We, the current year, current budget this year is over $1.2 million for that function.
Thank you.
All right, Julia, if you'll give us instruction, please.
Tina, do we need them to read anything specific for the motion on this one, or is that the next one?
The next one.
Okay, so then whoever wants to make the motion, if you can just move to approve the budget as presented, and then from there, whoever speaks second will be the second, and then each person individually will. and then each person individually will just give their record vote.
All right, may I have a motion for approval? Tommy's made a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
By Karen. With that, then we will record the vote by persons. I should ask for public comment first. Please come forward.
My name is John Geezy, and I'm with District Five. Regarding the shelter, the budget, how much of that money is salaries? The additional, is that for one additional person?
Yes, ma'am. I would suggest that we, there, the city staff is working on a game plan, moving forward on the animal shelter, and I believe until we have a game plan, this discussion doesn't have a lot that we can add to it. And we don't have a final plan on the animal shelter. When we do have, we will take that up and have a further discussion on it, but we can't just be throwing numbers around on this right now without a game plan. We need a plan. We don't have a plan in terms of challenges or opportunities or issues at this point.
Mayor, that is correct. If in the future, any adjustments are made based on the discussions we've had, any adjustments to the policy and the plans moving forward for the animal shelter, we can come back if necessary, if we're looking for more money with an amendment. But quite frankly, I think that the reduction, as far as animal population out there, should help us to maintain within the budgets, budget parameter that we've had. So, again, we'll take a look at that. Once we complete our, our discussions, make our final plans, we can present any changes to the city council at that point.
Thank you.
Are y'all, is that approved, raises for the current personnel there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just, I don't know if I go on record.
That's okay. That's why you're here.
I protest that. I don't think that this current, the current director is competent to do the day-to-day operations. I don't know if that position needs to be split, budget, I mean, finances versus day-to-day operations, but I think that...
We're going to do a whole review of the animal shelter. We'll have a game plan, and at this point in time, we won't be talking about any individual person's existing salary, potential salary, et cetera. It will all be part of a game plan that the city staff puts together on the animal shelter.
Okay. Time, timeframe for that?
I, I don't know. It depends on what...
But after approved budget already?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to answer that question, Mayor, nine-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars of that is salaries.
Okay. All right, so Larry, do you want to record your vote as yea in approval of the vote, of the budget as presented? Karen?
Yea.
Lucy?
Yea.
Gunter, Mayor Gunter, yes. Harry?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item G is approved. Item H is the final public hearing of an ordinance leveling property taxes for the city of San Angelo, Texas, for the 2022 tax year. An ordinance fixing and leveling ad valorem taxes for the current tax use for use and support of the municipal government of the city of San Angelo, Texas, for the 2022, 2023 budget year, providing for the assessment and collection thereof, providing when the tax shall become due, providing when the tax shall become delinquent, providing for exemptions, providing for severability, providing for publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective date. Tina?
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, this is the second public hearing and final reading of the ordinance levying the property tax rate. So, the proposed rate for this year is zero-point-seven-three-seven-nine per one-hundred dollars valuation. I'd like to point out that, that is a decrease of over almost four cents on the property tax rate, maintenance and operation being at zero-point-six-three-one-two, the street infrastructure amount that you allocated last year being zero-point-zero-zero-six, and then the debt rate being the zero-point-one-zero-zero-seven, for a total of zero-point-seven-three-seven-nine.
Are there questions for Tina on this item? Seeing none, then, again, Julia, you want to give us instruction on what to do here?
On this one, we have to have specific language in the motion, and so whoever makes the motion, I would appreciate if you would read from this slide.
Okay, do I have someone who would like to make this motion? Tom?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero-point-seven-three-seven-nine per hundred valuation, which is effective, effectively a twelve-point-eight-nine percent increase in the tax rate.
I'd like to point out that the way the state has us word this, makes it sound like it's an increase, but it's actually, as I said, almost four cent decrease to the property tax rate.
Language is confusing. We go over this every single year in terms of making sure people understand that we are not increasing their property tax dollars, tax rate, sorry, not dollars, rate, because the dollars are relative to the appraisal. Okay, with that motion, with that property tax levy having been read, now do I need each individual person to read that as well?
No, we just need a second, and then we'll take a record vote again.
Okay, may I have a second? Harry made a motion, a second on this item. Are there public comments concerning the property tax levy?
I wanted to, again, I'm...
Please come to the microphone before you start talking.
I'm a headway service member, District Three, and I wanted to actually say this for, for the budget, but I guess it goes for taxes as well, to consider, moving forward, that an ADA coordinator, someone full-time, ranges from forty-five to seventy thousand dollars. And so, I'm hoping, I know that coming and presenting this at the end of the fiscal year is not always the most ideal time, however, I mean, we don't need to keep waiting, and so consider that moving forward with any kind of taxes or the budget. I wasn't able to provide that during the budget vote.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we will take a vote by individual person, and we'll start with Larry.
Aye.
Karen?
Lucy?
Aye.
Mayor Gunter, aye.
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 Motion passes seven zero. And if you'll provide me with those statistics I asked for through an email or however.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Seven is a closed session. There is no closed session today, so we will move into item eight. Follow-up and administrative issues. A, consider items discussed in executive session, which there are none, and B, consideration of approving various board nominations. The Design and Historic Review Commission, Stacy Elkins, SMD three to a first full term, and Chris Forbes, SMD four to a first term, both ending September 2024, and Keith San Angelo Beautiful Sam Spooner, SMD three to a first full term, ending September 2025. May I have a motion for approval of the boards? Lucy has made a motion, Harry has seconded. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven zero. Announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Our past two meetings have been on Thursdays, which are non-traditional city council meetings, so we need to make sure everyone understands that our next city council meeting will be on the traditional Tuesday, which is the first Tuesday of the month of October. And if someone would give me that date, I think it's the fourth, but it's the fourth. So, October fourth, eight-thirty AM, will be our next city council meeting. Thank you all for participating, and with that, may I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
So moved by Tommy, seconded by Tom. Anybody want to continue to linger and discuss anything further? We can stand around. With not, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, Daniel? On the issue of tree...